I'd like to call this meeting in the Shatteren City Council order. Would you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection A of the Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the Openshooting Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. And before we have roll call, I'd just like to welcome all of our guests to tonight's meeting, our special activities for tonight. And we'll be getting to that shortly. So could we have roll call, please?
George Klein.
Here.
Shane Shepherd.
Here.
Mark Graves.
Here.
Kevin Alexi.
Here.
Clay Anderson.
Here.
Could I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Clay to approve the agenda. Could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes. Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes for the city council meeting from April seventh, minutes for the planning commission meeting held April fourteenth, the March twenty twenty-five treasures report is included, and the water report for March twenty twenty-five. Also included is a fire department membership update. At the end of March, there were forty-five active members, special designated licenses that were administratively approved for the Country Kitchen, for the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation fundraiser at the Shatteren Arts Center on April twenty-first, and the Knights of Columbus Health Profession banquet at the Assumption Arena on May second. Anyone have any questions about any of that information? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes. Okay, now we're into fun and games. I am going to go down the front. Today, we have the honor of presenting the State of Nebraska World War II certificates and medals to three of our own World War II veterans. Welcome to all our visitors tonight, especially our honorees. Vern, Fred, and John's designees are all seated in the front row, and I won't make them stand right now for that. On the medal, the medal is imprinted with "Celebrating Eighty Years of Victory, 1945, World War II, Twenty Twenty-Five", and on the back, "On behalf of a grateful state of... Thank you for your service on behalf of a grateful state." So Vice Mayor Shane.
I, with the rest of the council, are lucky to honor you guys tonight. I'd like to first have Mark Graves present Vern Holmes his medal. Vern, or Mark?
Oh, okay. It says, "State of Nebraska, World War II Recognition Program Presented to Vern Holmes. Governor Jim Pillen and Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs would like to recognize and thank you for your service in the United States Armed Forces during the Second World War. Signed, Governor Pillen and John Hildur."
If you have any comments you want to make, feel free to do so.
Then Kevin, would you present Fred with his medal?
Hi, Fred.
Hi, Eric.
This has been the same. State of Nebraska, World War II Recognition Program Presented to Fred Canute. Am I saying that correctly? Governor Jim Pillen and the Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs would like to recognize and thank you for your service in the United States Armed Forces during the Second World War. Signed, Governor Jim Pillen and John Hildur, Director of Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs.
And tonight, let's see, John wasn't able to make it, but his three daughters are able to accept the medal from Clay.
State of Nebraska, World War II Recognition Program Presented to Don Monasmit. Governor Jim Pillen and Nebraska Department of Affairs would like to recognize and thank you for your service in the United States Armed Forces during the Second World War. Signed, Jim Pillen and John Hildur.
My dad would like to be in here tonight. He'll be ninety-eight on the twenty-fourth of April. This is his official uniform that he wore in Augsburg, Germany, and he's in Kreschbu right now. He just didn't feel like coming down tonight, but we'll give him a award. He'll be very happy about that. Ava had a couple things to say about him.
He was an Army E-Orch technician. He was in the Quarterback Division in Germany, in Augsburg. He worked with displaced persons. So when they took people that had been brought to Germany from Czechoslovakia, Poland, Hungary, he took them back, the train, he took the train that went back and took them back to those places. But unfortunately, those people were left with plenty of trash. They were hungry, but they had no shelter to do with. He loved doing it. He loved taking the people back and sending them off back to their homes. He liked those things. That was the highlight.
Well, as I mentioned, thank you all for coming and sharing this honor with us. When I first got, heard about it, by way of Katie contacting Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs, I thought, I kind of shrugged it off. And then I picked up the Governor Pillen was really enthusiastic about it, and so I tried to join on the bandwagon. And thank you all for coming. And I never really expected this bit of a turnout.
Thank you for doing this.
Governor Pillen seems to be a pretty good guy. I always like to tell the story to everyone who listens. His uncle is my math teacher and also my wife Emily's math teacher in high school. I first introduced myself to Governor Pillen, and they say that he referred to the coach that we had, his uncle Sparky. So whenever he sees me, he reminds me. It's nice. Thank you for the American Legion, the Honor Guard for coming. And there are coffee and cookies at the American Legion program. So please avail yourself of that unless you want to sit through the take home.
I think we'd like some pictures, right? Pictures?
Yeah, we got all the pictures. I got a picture of all three of the... We'll take a few pictures. We'll take a little break from the media.
You know, the funny part is, now that you're here, I graduated from East Carolina in eighteen forty-one. I went through fifty-one, thirty-three, and I went through twenty-four in World War II. So I've been here.
Well done, gentlemen.
Someone left their camera.
And somehow, the city clerk will modify the minutes to appropriately make sure we're in compliance with everything. Item number C on the agenda, proclamation for Arbor Day, Lucinda. Do you have a copy of the proclamation? If you would go to the podium and...
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'd like to introduce one of our tree board members. She's going to read the proclamation for Arbor Day today. This is Lucinda Mays.
Thank you, Scott. Do you want to come through this?
Yeah, I would. Thank you.
What a wonderful night tonight with those amazing veterans. That was really kind of extra, extra special. That can't, that can't happen every day. Another thing that doesn't happen every day is Arbor Day, and I would like to read the proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Trees, wherever planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Shatteren has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue in its tree planting ways.
Now therefore, I, George Klein, Mayor of the City of Shatteren, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as Arbor Day in the City of Shatteren. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations dated this twenty-first day of April, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number D.
I'll make a...
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to have Steve Weber serve on the tree board.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Kevin. To appoint Steve Weber serving on the tree board. And if we follow through with this, this will fill all the vacancies on the board, which is nice to be able to say. Anyone have any questions? Not, could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes. Item E. Introduction of a new Parks Cemetery Department employee.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, Darian's actually been with us for a little while. We were, he's been, what, five months now? Over five months?
About five months, yeah.
So just kind of a busy season. We kind of got to let him slide by, but we weren't going to let him go without getting introduced to you. But this is Darian Dial. Let him tell you a little bit about himself.
Hi. Like you said, my name's Darian. I grew up in Shatteren. I decided not to go to college. I'm staying in Shatteren, try to get a full-time job. Going to end up trying to make this city my career and just try and live here as long as I can. This town's beautiful, so I like it here in Shatteren. So I decided to stay. And yeah.
So you grew up here? Are your parents still here?
Yeah, I grew up here. My dad's right here. My family's behind me, too.
Okay, good, okay.
Grandma's in the crowd, too.
Yep. And yeah. But yeah, that's...
Good.
That's it.
Thanks for working.
Yes.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you guys.
Yeah.
Good to meet you.
As a former Parks employee myself, I think you'll, I think you'll enjoy it. It's nice to be outside and in the parks.
Oh, yeah.
Making things beautiful for the community.
Yeah, I enjoy working here. It's nice. It's been good for me, learning a lot of new things. It's fun. I like it here.
Keep the trees alive and the weeds killed.
Oh, that's how that's supposed to work?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I always got that wrong.
Okay. Item F on the agenda, Deb Cotier, Executive Director, Northwest Nebraska Development Corporation. Report.
I felt like I was kind of blocking over here if they wanted to leave. Good evening, Deb Cotier. I live here in Shatteren, four two eight North Shatteren Avenue. Pleasure to be here. What a beautiful couple of days we've had. Just wish we'd have a little more moisture, but the trees and the lawns in Shatteren are really looking spectacular, so I got to get out and take advantage of that. I even noticed when I stepped out of my front door, the dandelions are so bright yellow this time of year. Maybe it's just because we haven't seen them for a while, but they're even sort of pleasant to look at. You should have received a written report from me in your packet. I don't really have much to add. I might make a couple of comments relative to, first of all, the marketing project that we're working on, which is through the Golden Shovel Agency with help from the LB eight forty committee here. So thanks again for that. We are about knee-deep in trying to pull together all of the items and data and pictures and logos and names of people that we want and things that we want to decide to put on this new website that we're creating. So that has taken a considerable amount of time. But fortunately, because we went through this really in-depth process to build a marketing plan, the Golden Shovel Agency folks have a lot of data already, have done a lot of research on our behalf. So that part of it is, a lot of that's been done already. But what you'll see in terms of a change from our current page to the new one is much more clicking and much more opportunity to be able to either move to someone else's website to learn more about something or at the very least to have recognizable icons and logos that you can click on. So much more graphic and much less typed words. So we're happy about that. We're also working, of course, with the Chamber and the tourism folks on the gathering of photography. Carrie's been great to help us figure out what kinds of things she already has on her website. We don't want to duplicate her website, but we want it to complement each other. So we continue to work on that, and she's made available to us a whole bunch of photography, so we're happy for that. A quick personal update or report on the Heartland Expressways trip to Washington this year. We had an appointment with every single senator and congressperson on the eight-state route, with the exception of one senator from Wyoming. Other than that, someone from our organization, there were twenty-five of us in DC, someone was in every single office that are along that route, from Texas to Canada. So we felt as though that was really successful. I personally was involved in about eleven appointments, mostly the states right around us. There were two other members from the Heartland Board that went with me, so we, of course, saw the three folks from Nebraska. But we also were in on meetings in South Dakota. Some of the Congresswoman from Wyoming, a couple of congressmen from Colorado, even one from North Dakota. So we have the opportunity to help show the breadth of the support for this project. And our leader really makes a good case for us all speaking with the same message, and that is to make the Congress people all understand that we work together in this eight-state region, and what we're looking for is a cohesive, modern, connected, at the very least, four-lane divided highway from Mexico to Canada. And the final thing I might mention, the two photos are at the bottom of your page on the report that I sent in. This was kind of a fun event. I wish I could have been here to participate, but it helped put it together anyway. The State of Nebraska Department of Economic Development has hired some consultants to really go out across the entire state and hear from the folks who are hiring employees, what kind of challenges we're having, how people are going about finding new employees so that they can get a sense for maybe what direction or how best to move forward in the state of Nebraska with workforce recruitment. So we had a group together. There were four consultants. We had participation from staff members and students from Shatterne State, Shatterne Community Hospital. The, we had one banker. We tried to keep the group small enough to be able to visit with these four folks. But they were impressed with Shatteren. They had a tour then of Shatteren, and they will use all that information that they gathered, along with the other twenty towns that they've been to in the last two weeks, put together a better plan for us to be able to recruit folks. And then what's coming up next is we're going to start working in earnest on the twenty twenty-five version of our workforce development effort, and that's to bring sophomore students into the community and visit with actual employers and put these kids in front of the kind of jobs that they think they might want to do and let them get a little feel for it, whether it's the hospital or the golf course or the implement dealer or the veterinarian. We try to get as many local businesses to sign on to that. And last time we did this, two years ago, we had over three hundred sophomore students in town for the day. It was total chaos, but it was a lot of fun. So we learned from that. We learned from the version we did in Alliance last year, and we'll be doing that, I guess, my best guess is very end of September, first part of October, we'll try to put that together again in Shatteren. And that's all I have tonight.
Anyone have any questions for Deb? Everything seem okay in DC to your expectations?
Yeah, it was... Every time I go, it costs more to go. I was just shocked. I thought when we got Ubers, they'd all be cheaper than the... Because everybody said how the taxi cabs are starting to really dig people. I stood in front of a Senate building, called an Uber, called it up on my phone, and it was going to be fifty-four dollars to take me about eighteen blocks back to the motel. I waited for a cab, and it was twenty bucks. I enjoy it, man.
Thank you. Okay. Item number G on the agenda.
Introduce Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Clay for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, which is to approve an agreement between the Fraternal Order of Police Northern Panhandle Lodge Number Sixty-nine and the City of Shatteren for the period of October first...
My best guess is very end of September, first part of October, we'll try to put that together again in Shatteren. And that's all I have tonight.
Anyone have any questions for Deb? Everything seem okay in DC to your expectations?
Yeah, it was... Every time I go, it costs more to go. I was just shocked. I thought when we got Ubers, they'd all be cheaper than the, because everybody said how the taxi cabs are starting to really dig people. I stood in front of a Senate building, called an Uber, called it up on my phone, and it was going to be $54 to take me about 18 blocks back to the motel. I waited for a cab and it was 20 bucks. DC is what it is. I enjoy it.
Thank you. Okay, item number G on the agenda.
Introduce Resolution 2025-33 and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Clay, for Resolution 2025-33, which is to approve an agreement between the Fraternal Order of Police Northern Panhandle Lodge Number 69 and the City of Shatteren for the period of October 1st, 2025, through September 30th of 2027. Do we have any explanation from either the City Manager, Police Department, both there?
Well, I think we've got our negotiating group from the FOP that's up here. I don't know if you guys have anything to say, but I can say on the city's behalf, we were looking at the comparability study, comparing with different communities throughout our whole area. And we also looked at the entire state because of the issues that we're dealing with, with the things that we have going on. I appreciate it, the negotiating team coming in with a very open mind on all of these things. They were very cordial, very professional in what they were doing. I think we turned it into a very productive sessions for everything that we were doing, and I think we came to a very good agreement on what we need to do to move forward and continue with outstanding services that these men and women provide to our community.
Anyone have any questions?
Changes, or?
No, the changes were pretty much signified inside the document that was provided to the council tonight. Was, you know, we did some biggest definitions, with some, just changes in some definitions, just for clarification. That was brought up from both sides. And then we talked about a little bit about some personal leave, dealing with some of the definitions and how that is, and then wages was what it was, too. And like I said, we were comparing with our sister cities around the area, and then we tried to compare with everybody else, too. We did agree that this is going to be a one-year contract for the wages itself, because of the volatility that's going on right now, not only locally, but statewide. We wanted to make sure that we approached that back again this next year. And like I said, I think we came to a very, very good understanding for both parties. And I hope it was good for what we had. And I don't know if there was anything else that you guys had or concerns in there. We can always discuss those down the road, too, so.
You know, Katie sent it out on Spark a little early, if we wanted to read the whole thing. I did not read the whole thing, although I did scan some of it this morning while I was eating breakfast, so.
Just a...
It didn't give me indigestion, so.
In the future, going forward, if, it's hard to know what's been changed from last year. I know sometimes in the budget, we'll have things highlighted in red or yellow to signify changes. Without having the previous document, it's hard to really compare and contrast. Just to have an idea of where things are going.
We can definitely look at that as a group to make sure it's applicable to what we need to do, to make sure everybody's good with it. We can discuss it when we do that. It's a good suggestion.
Other questions, comments? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Item number H on the agenda.
I'll introduce, sorry, George. I'll introduce Resolution 2025-34 and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kevin, seconded by Mark, for Resolution 2025-34, which is to approve the final plat for tracks 1, 2, and 3 of Riddell subdivision. At the agenda meeting, I said, "Where is that?"
Yeah.
So I'm sure that that's probably the similar question, so if someone could address those items.
What was that, George?
We went and went nowhere. I saw the map, so.
Yeah, so this is a tract, I'm sorry, Matt Watson, Kreitz and Schaefer Loffs. I'm an attorney here in town, represent the estate of Ira Owens, and Luanne Riddell is the personal representative of that estate. She is here present. This is a piece of land, 46 acres or so, 47 acres, roughly four miles south of town, on Highway 385, on the east side. There was, the Ira Owens Estate owns, it's a log cabin house there overlooking to the east, is being sold, and the buyers simply didn't want all the land. And so we needed to replat that tract into a smaller tract for that purpose. And then the two remaining tracts have actually already been sold, or we have a contract for sale. And so this is the process that we need to go through to have those tracts approved, so that we can finalize those transactions.
And I want to note that we're considering that, because it's a fairly long ways out, but it's within the two miles of the state limits, and that's because of the golf course is part of the city.
Correct.
Otherwise, we wouldn't even be probably talking about this.
Yes.
Otherwise, it would be in front of the county commissioners. They'd be approving.
Any other questions?
Is there, so there's a house that, like you said, log cabin on track two, I mean, this is just general...
Yeah, there's a...
Will be track two?
The house is located on track two. Track three to the north is 22 acres of pasture ground at this point. Track one is almost entirely owned by Luanne Riddell herself right now. There's a .43 acre portion of that that will be added to the ground that she already owns, but she owns the majority of track one. And so we're kind of just cleaning up those legals once this plat is approved for that purpose.
So is there a house on track one, then?
Um, there is. There is, and that is the property on by... That's further south. That's property owned by Luanne Riddell herself. Correct.
Anyone have any other questions? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Thank you. All good.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thank you.
Item number I on the agenda.
I'd like to enter the police resolution 2025-35 and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Papers on the floor.
We had a motion by Mark, seconded by Shane, for Resolution Number 2025-35. I got papers out of order. Shuffle them. Which is to approve the plans and specifications for the City of Shatteren Anne Street Water Main Replacement Project and authorized notice to contractors and bidders. Janet, do you want to...
Got Tori here for the order.
Tori?
Tori Zuber, I'm Utility Superintendent for the city, 1590 South Maple. We've been looking to, I brought this up to the city's attention here, this last year, we had two breaks on that 200 block of Anne. And we had another incident where a service line was hit. That's kind of negated on that. But in the past, probably six years, we've been over there at least five times since I've dealt with it. I know there's been some other issues in the past with that line. It's thin-walled steel, so it's old. We're talking probably 80 years old. And it's at the life expectancy, and then some. So we're looking to replace the 200 and 300 blocks of Anne Street. It's eight-inch steel.
This is also a budgeted item, too, as well, that's in the budget books, that we feel is an adequate amount to do it, but with all the uncertainties, we don't know what it's going to be like.
So at the agenda meeting, just general information for the three of you that were not there, I asked, and they got to explain a little bit more, but we're going to have, and correct me if I'm wrong, copper pipe, copper pipe up to the curb stop on both sides of the street.
So what they're doing, what, from the main to the curb stops, they're going to do poly, which is plastic?
Okay.
Polyethylene.
Yeah.
Polyethylene?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then from there on, the homeowner... Does whatever they want, but...
Yeah, it's their choice whether they want to continue with the rest of that or not, after that point.
So is polyethylene, I probably didn't pronounce that right, is a replacement for a lot of copper piping, or?
Uh, not so much the copper, it's the galvanized and lead service lines, which we're also dealing, as everybody knows, we're dealing with more nowadays, so. And that's all referring back to the lead and copper rulings that we're having to reach underneath the negotiations. I think recently, we sent out surveys not too long ago about the lead and copper, which everyone should have received. And this is some of our alternative methods. In the past, we never did take care of the service lines up to the curb stops, but now we are going to, to do our part and to encourage our citizens to do their things that they need to do for their properties as well. This, the polyethylene is a very good substitute for it. It's a little more economically priced than the copper and/or other methods that they have out there. And what Tori's projecting for doing this is a very good area to get taken care of.
So with the, like with the chip seal and what we're going to have done, it went over budget, so we scaled it back. If the bids come in higher than expected, will we scale this project back, or is this is what we're going to do?
I'm assuming we'll have to regroup and see where we're at, but there won't be any scaling on it. It will get done.
We're doing it. Carrie's got the money.
It will get done, yes. He has the monies to do that. And we, he, their estimates on these are a lot better. That chip seal, even our contractors, the engineers, admitted that they did not have all the current information for our areas. We have a lot better pricing for our water mains and stuff up in this area, because we've done more projects recently on those things. So we're more confident on these. We'll come in closer to the engineer's estimates.
So just to be clear, I think you're indicating if a resident wanted to take care of the line past the curb stop, this is the time they could ask questions about that, try to get that in place...
Yes, this would be, yeah.
When the ground is already open.
Yeah. The contractors are going to be notified that if the citizens of the property or the owners of the property, they'll be given the opportunity to talk with them at the time, but it's not going to be included in our project part.
Right, right.
This is what we're trying to get done.
We have already prepared letters to send out to all those property owners on those two blocks to tell them that this is just that. This is the opportune time to take care of, especially if we notify you and you have a lead line. We, this is an older part of town. We are well aware that probably over half of those property owners on those two blocks do have lead lines. And this will know, when we dig it up, that they, if they have lead lines, we'll notify them and tell them, hey, no better time than right now. If the contractor agrees to do their lead line and replace it, great. If not, it's still, they're open, get another contractor, another plumber, another drain layer, to possibly do it at the same time.
So there's no tap fees for the homeowners?
No, no tap fees.
Even if they do new?
Right, correct, because we're right there.
Right, right.
But we have all the letters ready to go already. We just need to get a successful contractor and get going.
What kind of timeframe will they have? I mean, you'll have it open laying the main line, if it's 40 houses.
Several, it'll be several weeks, easily.
So...
But we're only going to do one block at a time. We're not going to have both blocks open at the same time. The other thing that we talked about in the agenda meeting was the water main was replaced underneath the highway when the highway construction went through. So that work's already done. So we just have the 200 block and the 300 block not going underneath the highway. But we will not have both blocks shut down at the same time. Any other questions?
No more questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Item number J on the agenda.
I'll introduce Resolution 2025-36 and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin, Resolution Number 2025-36, which is to approve the contract with fuller construction of Shatteren for the ADA restrooms at the Downtown Plaza.
And only if you have questions. So this is just to approve the contract that we talked about at the last meeting.
Like they're amended? Didn't you amend one?
You approved the amendment, you approved the amendment last time.
Right.
So I'm just here if you have any other con, any other questions. We'll be moving the shed probably in about two weeks. Up to the Aquatic Center.
No other questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Item number K on the agenda.
I'll introduce Resolution 2025-37 and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Clay, seconded by Mark, Resolution 2025-37, which is to approve the contract with Midwest Coatings Company, Inc., for the 2025 Chip Seal Program project. Any questions? We pretty well went over that last meeting, but...
This one, we will probably have the change order ready for you at the next meeting. But it will be exactly what you, we already talked to you about.
No other questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented in our information.
Second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane, to approve the claims. Anyone have any questions? I did not make any comments when our things, when I went through them. There was the FNBO, the credit card packet was rather thick, and I did not flip through every page of that thing. But I did, oh, and I didn't make a note on it for the utility box for the water department for the pickup. Instead of it being, it's an individual as opposed to ABC, Inc., or, you know.
Yeah.
Fly-by-night.
What we got here is, this is a gentleman that Tori was notified by GMC. I believe Laverne Berry was the one that referred him to him. And he said that basically he found this utility box that was on either Craigslist or some type of a aftermarket list. He is looking for basically a $6,000 price on a unit that's literally brand-new, been installed and then was taken back off because his guys didn't like it. And Tori looked at the prices of what a brand-new one is. He says it's between 16 and 16.5. So for the considerable savings, he went ahead and was talking to him. He's going to be looking at this this next Wednesday. Wednesday is when they're going to go and look at it and make sure it works for us, and then pick it up. And that's why we're wanting to have it approved. If it does not come to his standards, what he wants, he'll bring it back, we'll void the check, and he'll continue looking elsewhere.
I think if we can save the city some money.
Yeah, we're looking at saving around $10,000 is what we're estimating, so, at least on the box itself. He did a good job researching it.
Any other questions? Any other questions about claims? If not, you have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Uh, we do not need a resolution to excuse the absence of a council member. Public comment, period. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on the ag, this agenda, we certainly do so now, and individuals are allowed a total of three minutes to speak. Have any? Anyone here appears to be mute point, um, so city manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just got a couple of quick things just want to bring out. Um, Chief Eckstein had sent out a pre, press release concerning the pets and such, and we just want to remind people as we're getting heavier with the spring and nicer days, please be wary of your animals, keep them on the leases, leashes. Um, if you have dogs and, and other pets or whatever in the community, be conscientious of your neighbors, um, and just help else out to be proactive on your, on your looks. Uh, the other thing is, is dealing with the dial truck in springtime. I know it's getting time for people are starting to clean out garages, closets, whatever else. We do have the dial truck, which is at a phone number of four-three-two-zero-five-two-eight, in which we can leave a truck there, uh, allow them to put whatever they want inside of it. Um, and they just have to let us know so we can make sure it's taken care of. But, uh, as they're doing those things, try to help out to, to keep our alleys clear and such. And then the last thing is, is as people are looking at their vegetation and such, just be conscientious of what we ask everybody to do. Nothing over twelve inches, branches that are below ten foot in streets or any place that we have vehicles driving, that includes alleys. Please make sure that we're trying to do everything we can to make our vehicles last, not only for swan, but for our own vehicles that have to get down there, including everything from fire trucks to the ambulances or anything else. We're just asking everybody to be conscientiously thinking about those things as they're getting out of the winter blues and into the summer and springtime fever. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Council closing comments? Start with Shane.
Council closes comments. Um, I just want to, uh, say thanks to the three individuals this, tonight, um, for their sacrifices. And, uh, just, I wrote a little, little, I don't know, paragraph, but, um, I said, uh, "The greatest generation earned their title by enduring the Great Depression and then bravely fighting in World War II. They return home and build a strong, prosperous society that we know today. Their resilience and unity, commitment to service set an inspiring standard for us all. Let's honor their legacy."
Yes, well, I'm pleased that we had three recipients that, uh, that we could honor this evening. My, my father was in World War, War II. He, uh, was on APA one-one-seven, a troop transport, the USS Haskell, made six trips across the Pacific hauling, uh, the, the brave, uh, men going over to fight. And so, uh, unfortunately, he, he is passed and wasn't able to participate in something of, of this nature. But, uh, there's getting to be fewer and fewer of these, these brave, uh, individuals that have sacrificed so much, and I'm happy that we could honor them tonight.
I got to echo, uh, Mark and Shane. I'm glad to be a part of this, uh, this opportunity to honor the, these three men. I, I'm reminded of something the author John Green, uh, tends to say, which is, is that history is not something that happened in the past. We live in history. Um, and it, it's, it's amazing and inspiring to, uh, be able to shake hands with, uh, with these men and, uh, just honor their, their sacrifice and their, their experience. I'm also glad to see, uh, on the city side of things, um, just some of these projects moving forward. Um, I, probably the biggest thing I hear from, uh, speaking with citizens is what's going on? What is the city working on? And these, this is the work, uh, approving it here, and, and I'm glad to see these projects moving forward.
Yeah, I'll kind of beat a dead horse on this. Thanks again to our three recipients. Uh, as a fellow veteran, you know, it's nice to see, especially those older generations, get the recognition that they deserve. And I know, uh, coming up here, the Job Corps is having their annual job fair and tours, uh, May third, I believe. Uh, that's always a good time to go out and get a tour and see everything that they do there. And that's about all.
Well, it certainly was an honor to be asked to award these certificates tonight, and I would be remiss if I didn't give Emily credit for helping organize this. As you well realize, she does an excellent job in doing that kind of things. And I wanted to thank the chief and Dustin for arranging reserve parking out front. Um, the American Legion for the patriotic welcome and the city staff, and to the Holden Armstrong from the Department of, Nebraska Department of Veteran Affairs for contacting us. And to congratulate Shatteren High School students who were inducted into National Honor Society, and to those students who received awards and scholarships at the Qantas Program and the FBLA students. And a couple of things coming up. Festival of Quilts is this coming weekend. And the Shatteren State College students are giving back to the community with the big event. And I particularly noticed, um, Tom's comment about, uh, alleys. Um, I go down South Maple, there was, there's been a washing machine in the eight-hundred block there. Been there a couple of months. Now it's been joined by, uh, the rest of what's left by a sofa.
I thought you were going to say dryer.
Dryer, yeah.
Complete the set.
And even in the area, alley behind my office, I think somebody's doing some super cleaning. There's a, there's some furniture and, uh, some type of exercise apparatus behind there, so. If the, if I can grab a hold, maybe some of those, uh, college students, I might direct them to help maybe get some of that hauled, sawed, hauled off, but.
Four-three-two-zero-five-two-eight.
So with that being said, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by me, seconded by Mark. Could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. And I imagine there's some extra cookies down at the American Legion, so.